The first event they ever held.
First ever, like in 2014? Really?
Or 15, right after it first started.
Okay. It's now, thank you.
Have they done, have they done a lot there?
They, they make it sound like they have. And so.
Not for everything.
So the way they, they said it was that they've done at least five new buildings. And the way their, their words.
I had to change.
Their words spring pouring out. That film, I know.
I had to take like.
It's a similar.
So the way around.
I was trying to figure it out. Well, I either have a print.
His temple.
Go through possibly.
He's not going to have to greenfield.
For. I'll try to size it right until they print it out. Because if you print it just the way that email came.
Yeah, because some guy wants to buy it. He wants to make sure. Same number.
I was like, hey.
I don't think.
It's separate.
It could be a week or a year ago, but I really don't think I'm not going to talk about big sentences.
Because that's, because that would be a perfect amount of time necessary to assess the.
Five big ones a year, but they're up to 100% success in all of them.
And of course.
It's a huge number. They've got a wedding. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But if they're doing them all outdoors.
Then you got to go. But they're in the big barn there.
The old house on the left of the barn, I mean, on the right or the barn on the left?
On the right. Because I was gonna, I was gonna have a big party there. Beautiful barn. I haven't actually.
It's really cool.
And then they have like little cottage.
Call to order.
We keep from you, Seth?
Yes, you are. All right, welcome everybody. Peterborough Select Board meeting for February 7th. Tyler Ward with me at the table here is fellow Select Board member Bill Taylor. Town Administrator McStay and Assistant to the Town Administrator Alec Royce. Carl Mabzino, Henrik Lust from Budget Committee are here at table two. Uh, tonight.
Mary's in there.
Uh, open there. And Seth McLean's here and Chief Walker. All right, tonight we have a short presentation brought to us by Willard Williams, the owner of 12 Feet Oak Square. That's the Toadstool Bookstore, if everybody knows. Request our assistance with Brownfields. We also have William Wilcox here from Wilcox and Barton. And on the screen, we have J.D. Mack from the South West Regional Planning Committee. And Bill Kennedy, the other Select Board member. And, uh, no, uh, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right, and then at 6:00 PM, we'll have our joint Budget Committee.
Five thirty.
At 5:30. Don't be late. All right. Get to it. Who would like to start?
Thanks for having me. My name is Bill Wilcox. I'm with Wilcox and Barton, the Principal and the Geologist. And we're out of Concord, New Hampshire. Today I'm here with Willard Williams. And we're asking the town to serve as an applicant to the, to the Brownfields program through the Southwestern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. I'm sure many of you know there's been contamination at the bookstore property now for many years, first identified in about 2006. And we're chasing around chlorinated solvents, which may be associated with a former dry cleaner located where the bookstore is today. A lot of the work has been done, a lot of the investigation work has been done to date. But there's still many investigatory phases left to do before we can get to a remedial action plan. So as the applicant, we're trying to access the EPA Brownfield money, which has been steered towards the Regional Planning Commission. To continue the assessment of the property. I can get into the details if you'd like it, but in general, that's what we're looking for.
Maybe some details.
Sure. Sure, I have a site, I have a site plan here, and I think you each have one in front of you also. This is the Toadstool property. And right out here in front, there are two monitoring wells, and we found chlorinated solvents at a very high level at the side of the building. We then have a large monitoring well network partly installed by Wilcox and Barton. Installed by New Hampshire DES Engineering firms over the years. And we've established this network of monitoring wells that shows where the contamination is. And right now, there's a plume of chlorinated solvents that work in a teardrop shape directly into this area. To complicate that, the depth of water is somewhere between seven and 10 feet down. And we have these old channels that come down through the property that used to access the river. We also have storm drainage utilities that bisect the site. And all these could act as preferential pathways for more contamination. When we identified the contamination so close to the building, we did what they call, we did subslab testing to determine what the vapors were underneath the building. And we determined that there was a potential breathing hazard to folks inside the bookstore. So we installed what they call a subslab depressurization system. So we actually installed pipes beneath the building that remove the contaminated air before it comes into the building. Based on the groundwater plume direction, it is moving in this direction. And through the state of New Hampshire, we're required to evaluate the soil vapor levels in these five buildings down gradient of our site. So part of the investigation that will need to be happened in the near future would be doing soil vapor tests outside or, outside the foundations to determine whether or not there's a potential for the occupants to be breathing bad air. The other phase of investigation that would be necessary, because we have contamination at depth, right next to this really hot well, we put one as deep as we could on top of a rock. And we also have contamination that it looks like it's down deep. My experience is the state of New Hampshire will ask us to delineate the deep contamination also and determine where that is. So under the ground, you have some dirt. Below that, we have bedrock. The groundwater is inside the soil above the rock. And so we have what we call the top of the water table we're evaluating, where we have the chlorinated solvents. We also put one as deep as we could on top of the bedrock where it's also present at about 1% a level of the saturated zone. So my guess is there'll be some level of investigation needed to determine where the deep contamination is going. So looking forward, to get to a solid remedial action plan, one, we're going to have to continue to do groundwater sampling throughout the territory to understand the seasonal fluctuations of contamination. Two, we're going to have to evaluate the soil gas levels of the five buildings affected where there's contamination above a certain level. Three, possibly evaluate the deep contamination across the site. And four, possibly collect additional data that will help us get to a remedial action plan. For example, if we put soil vapor points across the site, we'll have a better idea of where the, the plume is to target cleanup. So there are many different steps that the Regional Planning Commission could support with Brownfields. And a different consultant, they'll have their own consultant do the work. But it would be very supportive to the bookstore and to Willard to get this moving. And just, just for perspective, he's already spent more than $100,000 on this level investigation over the past year. Also, he had a real estate deal fall through because of the contamination. So by accessing the Brownfields monies, hopefully they'll get better utility and better value in answer value downtown Peterborough.
There's no recourse from, from previous polluters?
That's a good legal question, but.
One you're not here to answer.
Right. So it's, it's complicated in the site. The state of New Hampshire targeted this site over the past 20 years. They've been looking for what the source was, and we found it when we did the real estate transaction screening.
So next step, Mr. Mack is here from South West Regional Planning. Does he support this or offer more information?
Offer more information. So is Danica.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
So I'm happy, I'm happy to speak if you'd like.
Sure, please.
Yeah, so South West Regional Planning Commission, we have, we won a Brownfields Assessment Grant from the Environmental Protection Agency last year. It's a $500,000 grant. We're just starting our, our process right now. We'll have the funding through 2026, September of 2026. We've had a program going since 2003, and Peterborough's actually taken advantage of it quite a bit. Some other examples of Brownfields Assessment work we've done was at the Grove Street parking lot. The Wild Earth, the former Wild Earth thermometer factory that's now a park. The, uh, the, uh, the new brewery in town. Sorry, I'm forgetting.
GR.
Thank you. And also the, the community center, the former armory. So there's been quite a bit of work done over the years. The purpose of doing environmental assessment, we see it as an economic development tool that we can offer to our member towns to help you with your goals. And that often requires working with private landlords. Where public interest and private interest sort of overlap. So to get into our, to get into our program, it has to be nominated. It can be nominated by a private party. But if that's the case, then we ask that a Board of Selectmen support the nomination. Because we don't want to be bringing in any projects that are at odds with your goals as a community. And we look at the, you know, it's, it's somewhat competitive program. So we have other sites that we're looking at. So we have a Brownfields Advisory Committee. Danica actually happens to be a member of that committee. And what they do first is they, we look at site selection criteria that we have. So we're looking at things like having legal access to the property, level of threat to public health and safety. Level of other environmental risk. What opportunities will this investment make? Will it lead to new development, better tax base for the town? New jobs coming to the community, those kinds of things. And is there an environmental justice benefit to it? Are there, is it going to, is, is there a sort of a plan in place? That will lead to further revitalization of the area? I mean, that, this area of Peterborough's, a beautiful area, it's one of our, our, you know, regional destinations, as you know. But obviously, this is a threat to that. So we accept a nomination. And then we, as Mr. Wilcox described, we would work with a consultant that we've procured to conduct additional assessment activities. Working side by side with the state of New Hampshire, State New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to sort of characterize what, where the contamination is. If it's threatening public health or environmental, there's an environmental risk. And then, as he said, this funding can also be used to develop a remedial action plan. From there on in, once you create your remedial action plan, depends on what's in the remedial action plan. It might involve some actual cleanup, some removal of contamination. Or it might just be a monitoring. There's a whole host of things depending. Every site is a little different. But I'll stop there, and I can take any questions if there are.
Sure, so Peterborough has had.
Or pass it on to Danica.
Yeah. I do have a question. Peterborough has had luck in the past. You mentioned several projects that took advantage of the, of the Brownfields grants. So having the town make this application, would that be beneficial to the, to Willard? And, or since we've received so many grants already, would it hurt his chances?
Or has he been created?
I don't, I don't hurt his chances for, you know, leveraging other funds? Is that what your question is?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, you know, if Peterborough's already, you know, been lucky enough to get several of these other grants for other cleanups. Would the, you know, the, the givers of the, of the grants see that as, oh, we need to put the money somewhere else? You've already, you've already gotten a bunch of money from.
Oh, I see. I see what you mean now.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, I think our Brownfields Advisory Committee would, they are basically the ones that make, these are local people in the region. They're planners, select person, selectmen that are sitting around a table making these decisions about how SWR BC uses the funding. It would be noted, you know, I don't think that the fact that Peterborough, Peterborough's done a really great job with the, the funding. We've used it on a variety of projects that have turned into great implementation. So you've done, you've been great stewards of that, you know, funding. And I don't think it would, would hurt his chances at all.
Great. Any quick, you want to add some more?
Uh, yeah, I'll say a few things. So for me, when this kind of came to my attention, this kind of hit on a trifecta of three different things for us. This is located in the, our downtown, which is for just about any community, the downtown is really the core of the community. This is a really iconic business that we are well known for. But also, it's located in the greater downtown tip district, and we want to make sure that that tax base is not affected. Not just this law, but the properties adjacent to it. So it is really important that we take advantage of the opportunity.
Anybody else have any questions or? What do we actually need to do?
Yeah, so has, has the project been nominated yet?
No, that's what you're being asked to do.
Oh, okay.
And so we're, we have to make a motion to nominate this project.
And submit the application on behalf of the Toadstool.
An application on behalf of the Toadstool to the South West Regional Planning Commission. So moved.
Right.
Hold on a second.
Bill Kennedy, seconded. All those in favor?
Right.
All right. Yeah, glad, glad to do it. Hopefully you can sort this out.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Willard, quick question. Has, you said the deal fell through? Is that the deal that was in paper a couple of weeks ago?
No, that was about a year and a half ago. That was about a year ago.
Okay, but the current respective purchaser is still in the works?
Yeah, we, we sold the bookstore, Steph, but we still own the building.
Ah, oh, I see.
And it's, it's the potential for the building that this is all involved in.
Thank you for clarifying.
Just.
Carol Nelson, how quickly before you would know if it's been accepted?
JV, the question is how quickly will, will we know that it's been accepted?
So what we'll do is we'll schedule our next Brownfields Advisory Committee meeting, which hasn't been scheduled yet. But I do expect it to happen in March at some point. That would probably, that would be the meeting at which this would be brought before the Brownfields Advisory Committee. So relatively soon. And then after that, the next step is assuming that they, you know, I can't speak for them. But assuming that they accept the nomination, that makes the project eligible for the funding. And it would be at that point that Toadstool and the town of Peterborough, I think as well, would, would work with our environmental consultant to develop the, you know, next scope of work. And then they would bring that to the Brownfields Advisory Committee at a subsequent meeting.
Just one more thought. You might want, it might make sense for you to authorize me to sign the application, any other documents necessary.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that one.
All those in favor? You heard that, Bill?
Hands up.
Okay, all right. Yes. Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Fingers crossed.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, JV.
Thank you so much, JV.
Bye bye.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
All right. Any new, any other?
They're all set until 5:30, so if you want to.
I had a question, but it wasn't about that. It was about your packet.
Yes.
On the police, on page 16, you've got a payroll of $38,000.
Should we wait for this question until we open our?
This, this had to do with the, what the budget. This is, I'm, I'm just asking about the numbers.
Yeah, well, let's, let's research, if you recess for now, I can, I'm happy to answer your question. We have about 10 minutes before the Budget Committee meeting actually starts.
Yeah, we'll recess for a little bit.
All right, my, my question is, I got the number of $124,000, and you've got 38.
What page are you on, sorry?
16.
Page 16. And you're looking at payroll taxes?
Yes, for the police.
You're right. I mean, I mean, then really the next step, Tyler, is a bigger laptop.
I just went for.
So the.
My, my glasses were all scratched.
The payroll taxes, it's gonna, is a, is the formula?
I know what it is. The formula is 0.765. And 1, 1.6 million dollars by place, 7.65 is 240.
Well, it's one point.
124,000.
Okay, I'm not entirely sure. I think that's really more of a Lilly question because she's the one that, that generates that.
Well, that's scary.
So.
Because I, I found four or five other ones in the, the numbers should be different.
Is that because that's an updated budget from the last one that you were working with?
Payroll is payroll. It's, it's a fixed number.
Let me, um, let me get Lilly.
I'll get her.
Get her, thank you.
For a lot of years.
It's anywhere where there's industry. Anywhere where there's industry, if you port it to.
Dry cleaners never.
Should have thought of that.
Well, you know, I just saw a whole, I don't know where I saw that. Did they find? Did you just think the whole?
I lost.
You have to unlock part of a house.
Yeah, those are.
They were part of a house that potentially you were. Do the bathroom, when you pull the, the wall off, you know, and there was a little slit there when you dropped the razor blades. How terrifying is it putting all those old razor blades out there?
They make these now.
Shred. Froze. Definitely not.
I have seen that. I've actually seen that in my own.
Hi, there's updated copies of the expenditure and revenue budgets. That went out with everybody's packet, but just in case anybody needed an updated one.
Did you have questions?
Yes, I have. Um, I have a question. How come that's?
Thanks.
You go one point.
Police?
Yeah.
Police for payroll taxes?
Yeah.
Police officers are not participating, are not allowed to participate in social security. Which is why the New Hampshire retirement rate is so much higher for police officers. And the same is true for fire.
Really?
Yep, so they contribute to Medicare. So it's the 1.2%.
All right. I have a couple of questions on. You told me it was 2.65.
Well, the rates are broken down by experience, so the whole town is 2.09% of the.
And what is, um.
Recorded salaries.
So what is the fire number?
The salary?
I mean, no, I know what the salary is.
That's just the breakdown that was based on experience.
They just use the salary as the fire number.
We're actually given exact numbers from. Next year's.
I'm just wondering how come you have. The fire department.
Well, we have moved all workers' comp budgets into the general fund one area, and I neglected to move that. So next year, you'll see that all.
Unfortunately, I volunteer.
If you go to page. If you go to page eight.
The amount from the fire station, you know what I mean? The workers' comp will be added to the rest of the town's workers' comp. If you look at every single apartment, every single apartment. Before I started.
Okay, there's a lot of workers' comp line.
So we zeroed them out.
I want, why is that?
So that they're all in one location. Workers' comp has no bearing on how the executive administration office is running versus the fire department. So all health insurance has been moved into pages. So all insurance projects have been jumped. So that, in the future, that amount of money will be here.
But I'm, I'm just asking.
Yes, yes.
So you've got, um, 340,000.
Plus a hundred thousand. Plus trainings, plus 56,000. It's all in one.
Yeah, I know.
It's not going to touch that because it's based off of the experience of the fire department in the last five years. The workers' comp. So there's a higher, there's a.
But even, if you look at the area. So. I came from Bill Kennedy. Well, if you did, if you do this, has some, there's some experience in it. Do you do it by the 206?
You don't do it by the 206, you do it by the experience rating as determined by the workers' comp.
So what is it?
That's how much there is.
It's serious because all the other.
Yes.
Did they change something? That they should get the tax on their money.
Social Security is not paid by police officers or fire. Or fire. Or fire. If they belong to the New Hampshire retirees. For part-time, they pay the full social. So there are two part-time police officers that are. And pulling a pension. They all head to the New Hampshire retirees. They're retired through that system. Now they're required to send the social security portion, just 6.2%.
There had to be more than that.
And then the other half is owed by the employer, so we owe 6.2% to social security.
Yep, all right, thank you.
How are you?
That's scary.
What's scary?
We have a $4.1 million payroll without you.
Sorry, I heard somebody mention my name.
I did.
Oh, in front of me.
I said, if you take the.
You're ventriloquist.
They get a program if they want.
What we pay in taxes. Can't tell the players on the scorecard?
Oh, the tax portion, I see what you're saying.
We're paying on 4.5 million plus, that's not.
That's the program. There you go. Yeah, I got, was there another one there? Yeah.
So, but all I see is this online salary. And it doesn't tell.
We had that.
So you're anxious?
We have, I'm just, this year, my salaries, full salaries, payroll. We have about $96,000.
In which.
The whole.
The whole, that's, yep.
But I figured it on.
The big block of trust funds that get combined into one warrant article, that's 929,700. The roadway fund, 400,000. Municipal facilities, that's 750,000 that I'm proposing we offset entirely with tech, with a fund balance, but still put money towards building the fire station. The upper hall fund, that's $5,000 out of fund balance. That's funded by fees that we get collect for renting the upper hall, and I'd like to start setting aside money for the next time we need to do any kind of renovations or repairs or maintenance of the floor up there. The bridges, culverts, and dams, 262,000, 162,170. That is actually a 500,000 article, but it's partially offset by infrastructure bill money that we received this winter. The ambulance service, that's 450,834. It's Peterborough's share of the cost to run the 911 portion of the ambulance service. Remember, the entire ambulance service is well over $2 million. Town clerk, that is the salary increase for the town clerk, and there's also some wording in there for what we would start a new town clerk at when one is elected in the future. So as a little bit, there was some gray area there that we need to clean up. So that's all in there. Elected officials, that's the balance of the elected officials who receive a stipend, and they're all combined into one warrant article. They, near as I can tell, they have not received any kind of an increase since the 1990s. Oh, my God. So the total amount to raise and appropriate, when you put all that together, is 10.9 million, almost 11 million dollars. So what does that actually mean? If you go to the right-hand side, I'm sure every single one of you has already read through the right-hand side. I'm just going to repeat it because I know that there's at least one person who's visually impaired who likes to watch these meetings. I want to make sure she doesn't miss anything. So the town, the town tax impact scenarios, if all the articles pass, and this is if the select board uses no additional fund balance, and there's no increase to the town's total assessed valuation, which is all the property values, all the properties in the town of Peterborough. That's how we create a tax rate. So if the tax, if we use no fund balance and there was no increase to assessed valuation, we'd be looking at tax rate of $12.43, which is an increase of $3.26. If the select board uses no fund balance and there's only a 10% increase to assessed valuation, then the tax rate would be $11.30, which is an increase of $2.13. If the select board uses $500,000 of fund balance and there's a 10% increase to assessed valuation, we'd be looking at a tax rate of $10.78, which would be an increase of $1.61. And this is over last year's tax rate. And if the select board used $500,000 of fund balance and we saw an increase of, in the assessed valuation, 15%, there would be a tax rate of $10.31, which is an increase of $1.15 over last year. Why 10 or 15% assessed valuation? Well, right now, we know that our assessed valuation for the properties in Peterborough is 80% of the market value of the properties in Peterborough. We know that we are going to have to do a reassessment, a townwide reassessment, when we implement the new assessing database, and we'll be doing that this fall. And I think it is reasonable to expect something between a 10 and 15% in overall assessed valuation after, as a result of that process. $500,000 is an absolute guarantee that it will be available in fund balance for the select board at the end of this year. I wouldn't put that number there if I wasn't sure that we would have it.
What percentage of the fund balance roughly is the 500?
Well, there's a lot of moving parts before we get to that anyway. So I don't want to address that because that equals what we paid the school district, what we paid to the county and all that, so.
Right.
I don't really want to talk about that. And if I can get through the whole presentation before taking questions, I'd be great, because there's a lot here, and I might answer a lot of your questions as I go. All right, so I want to back up a bit and just kind of provide a summary of the process to now. Beginning of September of '22, town staff began the budget process of creating and creating a draft fiscal year 2024 budget. Staff were advised proposed reasonable budgets, which sought to fund the services the town currently provides as they are being provided right now through this year's budget. Special consideration was given to staff retention, filling vacant positions, and preparing for known retirements. In the fall of 2022, staff also met with capital improvements committee, where they developed a forward-looking capital improvements plan that avoided debt service and leases. In November of '22, staff met with the select board to review economic conditions and set the basis for the fiscal year 2024 draft budget. This includes looking at projections of electricity, diesel, gasoline, heating fuel, propane, and wood pellet costs, as well as known increases to the health insurance, pension, which actually is an increase, mostly flat or a little bit down, property liability, and workers' compensation insurance costs. We also looked at COLA and merit recommendations, which were based on the Northeast Consumer Price Index and the 2023 Social Security COLA increase. In December of '22, the complete draft budget, complete draft of the total budget was posted on the town's website and submitted to the select board and the budget committee. And then in January of '23, town staff presented their proposed budgets to the select board and the budget committee at joint meetings. Form of the budget. So when I say the proposed total budget, that is a budget that is made up of multiple budgets managed by four different fund types, each with different funding sources. The general fund budget is made up by fees and taxation and is voted on at town meeting. It includes the following departments and services: the administration budget, the finance budget, the planning and building budget, the town clerk, the information technology and geographic information systems budget, recreation tax-supported, library, police, fire and emergency management, public works administration, and general services. These are all part of the general fund budget. There's more, though. So water and wastewater budgets are enterprise funds. They are funded 100% by user fees. They are included with the general fund and voted on at town meeting. The ambulance service budget is a revolving fund. It's funded 80% by user fees, which come from insurance, self-pay, and municipal customers, and 20% by a separate warrant article that is voted on at town meeting. That budget has been presented with the total budget to the budget committee and the select board to review, but is not actually voted on at town meeting, with the exception of that one special warrant article. The recreation budget is also partially supported by a revolving fund. It is funded 100% by user fees. It includes the community center, and that budget has been presented with the total budget for review, but is not voted on at town meeting. The public education government, or PEG, station revolving fund is 100% supported by Comcast TV franchise fees. That's what we use to livestream these meetings. That's what pays for the microphones and some other bits and pieces. That is presented with the total budget, but is not voted on at town meeting. And lastly, the pay-as-you-throw special revenue fund is 100% supported by the purchase of pay-as-you-throw bags, but it is voted on by a separate warrant article at town meeting. So you see, there's a lot of complexity in the budget, how the budget's funded, how the budget gets approved. So let's look at the cost drivers in the proposed total budget. What you have in your hand there is the proposed total budget that includes everything that is included in all those different funds and funding sources. But the increase in the, in that total proposed budget is 1.4 million dollars, 1,441,350. That increase is largely driven by three categories: energy cost, debt service, and personnel costs. So if we start to break into those a little bit more. Diesel increased over last year by $69,000. That's based on a federal projection of $5.85 per gallon, and that's based on actual usage. So we're not, we're not estimating our usage, we're looking at actual gallons used. Gasoline, same basis, where it's increased by $15,454. That's based on the federal estimate of $3.74 per gallon. Heating fuels, these are multiple fuel types, but as a, as a group, the heating fuels have gone up $32,685. Wood pellets are projected to cost $239 per ton, $240 per ton, really. Propane, $2.63 per gallon, and heating oil, $5.85, same as diesel, as you would expect. Debt service has increased $89,177. And personnel costs have increased $1,478,817. And those are all the personnel costs put together. That's salaries, payroll taxes, retirement, health insurance, dental insurance, workers' compensation, everything related to having a person work for the town is included in that, is increased by one, almost $1.5 million. When you total those three categories up, you get $1,865,850, 100. Wow, I'm tired, I'm sorry. I've done a lot of numbers way too many times. So, which is, just in those three categories alone, exceeds the amount that we're actually, of the total increase, or the increase in the total budget. What does that say? That says that despite the fact that all these increases are being put forward, the department directors have worked very, very hard to cut back on the things that, that they can't. They brought in an incredibly careful, thought, well-thought-through, responsible budget altogether. So here, here we are again at the total budget. So we have the general fund budget, which is funded by fees and taxation. The total gross expenditures is $12,346,716. The total revenues, $3,442,327, which gives us a net to raise and appropriate of $8,94389. I'm not going to read through the water enterprise, sewer enterprise, rec revolving, peg station revolving, and pay-as-you-throw funds, because all of those are raising and appropriating their own revenues that meet the needs of those, of those funds, that meet the needs of those departments and those services. They're paying for a fair chunk of the salary costs and fuel increases and what have you. The ambulance revolving fund is, as I said before, a $2.2 million expenditure budget. It is bringing in, or is expected to bring in, $1,757,708 in revenues, but that's still going to leave the town of Peterborough's share of the 911 portion of the service at $450,834 that will need to be voted on by a separate warrant article at town meeting. All right, so a word about estimated revenues before we, a bunch of words on estimated revenues before I get any further. All revenues in the proposed budget are estimates based on what has actually been received, actually been received. The proposed revenue budget sheets include the windfall grants that we got this year, in the current year, fiscal year '23, that will not be ongoing revenues. So that includes $26,504 in a New Hampshire retirement system refund, $402,324 in federal infrastructure grants, and $30,000 in a MAST grant. If anyone really needs to know what that means, what MAST stands, where they can ask stuff later. These revenues are not in the fiscal year 2023 budget that we presented a year ago because they're grants, they're windfalls. We weren't expecting them. They are all unanticipated revenues that the selectmen needed to adopt at special public hearings. So despite that, we've been showing them as part of our proposed revenue budget, and showing them as we have, and showing them as we are as a comparison of the proposed FY24 budget makes the comparison between the two years appear a bit more dramatic than it actually is. It's plain dramatic all by itself, and that does make it a little bit worse. Some revenues were overstated or will not be taken in FY23 and would need to be adjusted for accuracy. For instance, there's $100,000 of a transfer from South Peterborough Tiff District to the public works budget that was intended to offset engineering work that we simply are not going to be able to get to this year because Seth has taken on quite a bit more work than we had expected. There's also $57,057 in debt service that was expect, that we had budgeted to receive from an Anna Community Hospital. We budgeted for that when we thought that the actual debt service payment was going to be the $103,000 of last year, but this, this was the last year of that particular bond, and so it was half the cost. Okay? Now that we've done that, this is the worst slide that I have in this entire presentation. I am very sorry for how awful this looks, and I am absolutely not going to read all these numbers because there's just too many here. But this is the net change by department. When you take the expenditures and revenues on the left, so there's three, three large chunks of numbers here. On the left-hand side, you have FY23, the budget expenditures, minus the budget revenues equals the net budget for FY23. And then moving towards the right, you see the same for FY24, proposed expenditures minus proposed revenues gives you a net fiscal year 24 budget. And then all the way over at the right is the difference between the two. Now, as I just warned you, there's going to be some, some drama here that really doesn't need to be there. For instance, the administration budget, which is obviously the top, that is where we put those unanticipated revenues for the infrastructure grant. So you have my administration budget of 597,976 in FY23, minus $402,000 of unanticipated revenues makes it look like really the net impact of my department's budget was only $195,000. That is absolutely not the case because the town administrator has no revenues. We don't bring in any money. We oversee the collection of an awful lot of money, but we don't record that in my department. And so what you see in the proposed budget is the reality that I have an expenditure budget of 500,000. They are all unanticipated revenues that the selectmen needed to adopt at special public hearings. So despite that, we've been showing them as part of our proposed revenue budget and showing them as we have, and showing them as we are as a comparison of the proposed FY '24 budget makes the comparison between the two years appear a bit more dramatic than it actually is. It's plenty dramatic all by itself, and that does make it a little bit worse. Some revenues were overstated or will not be taken in FY '23 and would need to be adjusted for accuracy. For instance, there was $100,000 of a transfer from South Peterborough Tiff District to the public works budget that was intended to offset engineering work that we simply are not going to be able to get to this year because Seth has taken on quite a bit more work than we had expected. There's also $57,057 in debt service that was expect, that we had budgeted to receive from an Anna Community Hospital. We budgeted for that when we thought that the actual debt service payment was going to be the $103,000 of last year, but this was the last year of that particular bond, and so it was half the cost. Now that we've done that, this is the worst slide that I have in this entire presentation. I am very sorry for how awful this looks. And I am absolutely not going to read all these numbers because there's just too many here. But this is the net change by department. When you take the expenditures and revenues on the left, so there's three large chunks of numbers here. On the left-hand side, you have FY '23, the budget expenditures, minus the budget revenues equals the net budget for FY '23. And then moving towards the right, you see the same for FY '24. Proposed expenditures minus proposed revenues gives you a net fiscal year '24 budget. And then all the way over at the right is the difference between the two. Now, as I just warned you, there's going to be some drama here that really doesn't need to be there. For instance, the administration budget, which is obviously the top, that is where we put those unanticipated revenues for the infrastructure grant. So you have my administration budget of $597,976 in FY '23, minus $402,000 of unanticipated revenues makes it look like really the net impact of my department's budget was only $195,000. That is absolutely not the case because the town administrator has no revenues. We don't bring in any money. We oversee the collection of an awful lot of money, but we don't record that in my department. And so what you see in the proposed budget is the reality that I have an expenditure budget of $591,000 and no revenues, meaning my net is $591,000. And so it makes it look like there was a huge jump where I almost doubled my budget in a year. I have not, of course, done that. So a few things to keep in mind. That's the most dramatic of them, but they're peppered throughout all of this, and I'll skim through some of it. In planning building, as I said, there was a MAST grant in FY '23. We're also projecting fewer building permits, and we put the planning assistant position back in the budget. That was a full-time position a few years ago. It was reduced to a part-time position. That part-time position was then eliminated. We are asking for a planning assistant to be put back into the budget. Town clerk, this is a federal election year. We're also expecting a reasonable increase in motor vehicle registrations. IT and GIS, there is increased software licensing costs, and we'll also be replacing a very important firewall this year. In finance, there's an increase in debt service and health insurance. All of those are parked in the finance department budget. And also, as I stated before, the MCH debt service reimbursement has ended, so there's a drop-off in revenues there. Recreation, there is an increase in expected fees, and the revolving fund is helping to offset much of the increased, much of the increased staffing costs. The library, the building operation costs were an unknown while we were developing the fiscal year '23 budget, and so a lot of the increases that you're seeing there are reflective, really, of the actual costs of operating that building. Police department, we are converting a part-time captain back to a full-time captain and backfilling a vacancy that was created by the school resource officer, and we still have vacant position now that we need to fill. And fire and emergency management, again, most of the costs here are related to staffing and energy costs. In public works, we're converting a part-time custodian, truck driver position from, again, back from part-time to full-time. There is that $100,000 in revenues that we would have taken from South Peterborough Tiff, which makes the revenues look a little bit wonky. And of course, the increase in energy costs, if they hit anywhere, they hit in public works the hardest. But across all departments, across the board, personnel costs are the biggest driver in increases. All right, and now let's start talking about those personnel costs. So the personnel costs are really made up of four big chunks. We have salaries and the proposed cost of living adjustment and merit pay. We have market adjustments that we made in the FY '23 budget, are needed in the FY '24 budget, and will probably be needed in years beyond. And we have retirements. Positions that went from full-time to part-time when the occupant of that position retired now need to go back to full-time so that the occupant of the position now can fully retire. And we have health insurance, cost health insurance, let's not forget, went up 6.6%. All right, so we proposed a COLA of 5% and a merit of 3.7%, and that has been applied across all budgets. The COLA is applied to every employee's hourly rate. Merit, however, is assigned after the employee has been evaluated and is determined that they have met or exceeded their expectations or goals set out before them. This is how we ensure that we are getting the most out of our employees. This is really good for the town as far as our ability to make sure that they are doing exactly what we expect them to do. Gives them something to really work for. Any excess in the merit pool will be used to make market rate adjustments to hourly rates after a salary survey has been completed. This is what other towns are doing. We're not the only ones who are looking at this. So Amherst has, and this is a survey that I conducted end of December, first half of January. Some of these towns may have actually changed their budgets because they're all finishing up their budgets about this week. Most of them are holding their budget hearings either last week or this week, so their final number might be different from this. But this is the information that I had up through, I believe it was the 17th of January is when I got the last of it. So Amherst, they are budgeting a COLA of 6%, and they have step increases, so automatic increases in their budget of between 2.5% and 3%. Bennington has a COLA of 4% and a merit of 2%. Francis Towns going just straight COLA at 7%. Hancock, same at 8.7%. Jaffrey, 3% to COLA, 3% to merit. Milford, 7% to COLA. New Boston, 3% to COLA, 3% to merit. New York Switch, 7% to COLA. And Swansea, 4.5% to COLA, 2.5% to merit. I have more numbers for the rest of New Hampshire. If anyone's interested in seeing those, I'm happy to share them. But these are just, I figured, you know, about a half-hour drive or so from Peterborough. All right. Why is this important this year? Really what it comes down to is changes in the employment market. Post-COVID, there are far more positions and far fewer employees left to fill them. I think if you've heard the news over the last few days, the unemployment figures were announced to be the lowest that they have been since the 1960s. It's two generations that we have gone without seeing unemployment numbers this low. There are so few people out there, and all of the employers are competing for those same people. Governments are competing now with private sector for the same employee. It doesn't matter what department we're talking about, what job we're talking about, across the board, there are private ambulance companies who are paying more for paramedics and EMTs. There are private construction companies paying more for truck drivers. There are private wastewater management companies that are paying more for wastewater operators. It really doesn't matter what sector you talk about. They are out there, and they are competing. And to make matters worse, government benefits are no longer attractive enough to make up for lower wages. Every private employer is offering health insurance now, and their health insurance packages are just as attractive as ours. I can say this from personal experience. My son just got hired by Millicor, and so I was helping him understand his benefits package, looking at him like this is almost exactly the same as ours. Very few differences. They have more options than us, but aside from that, it's really a healthy package. Pensions used to be the gold standard that everyone wanted to achieve, but over the last 20 years, the pension system has really been reformed, yes. It has absolutely been reformed, but the benefits have been cut back so that anyone who is vested into the New Hampshire retirement system after 2012 is receiving substantially less pension than they would have gotten before that. They are not receiving their health insurance coverage for the rest of their life either. It's now 100% on them to either get Medicare or purchase themselves. So it's, you know, I mean, it's still great to have a defined pension. I don't think anyone's complaining about it, but it's not the one income that you're going to be able to live off of. Most jobs now require a higher level of skill and certification, which of course means that that employee is more valuable. And to be perfectly frank, our wages have not kept up. And so what you see on the screen here is a screenshot on the right-hand side from Jaffrey, Jaffrey Police Department's Facebook page, where they are currently posting an entry-level police officer's position at $58,281. That's entry level. That means that they have, they're not a certified police officer. Still need to go through police academy, which is 12 weeks. There would, you know, be substantial investment into that person while they are training. You have to pay them while they're in that training. They will get their health insurance, and they will get all the other benefits. They will need to be outfitted entirely with uniform and all the other accoutrements of a police officer. So they're starting at $58,281, and I'm sure you're asking, well, how much is Peterborough starting at? We start at $49,000.
Oh, my gosh.
We are so far behind. And it's not just Jaffrey. Jaffrey happens to be right next door, but Tuft and Borough is advertising right now. They start, and these are all uncertified officers' positions. They are starting at $54,974. Chester, New Hampshire, starts at $50,500, plus they have a $20,000 sign-on bonus. Bedford starts at $51,730. They have a $5,000 to $10,000 sign-on bonus, depending on whether or not you're certified or uncertified. Concord Police Department is starting at $59,300. Keene starts at $52,894. Center Harbor starts at $55,000. And Manchester starts at $57,259. Each of these, the vast majority of these departments offer COLA and step through their union contracts. They offer mostly the same benefits that we have. Some of them have different bonuses and incentives than we have, but really, we're lagging dramatically when it comes to those salaries. And it's not just police. Police is an easy one to grab, and this one, since this had just been posted fairly recently, was easy for me to post up, show you here. But truck driver laborer, as another example, Peterborough starts at $19.47 per hour. Milford starts at 23. Mathiason is paying twice that. These, this is the competition, and as I said before, this is across the board. We are seeing this in our EMTs and paramedics. We're advertising for three different administrative assistant-type positions right now, and we're getting no applicants. This is, it's an incredibly challenging environment. In fiscal year '23, the current year budget, we made some market adjustments so that we would be able to keep staff on, seasonal staff in particular. We were losing almost as quickly as we could hire them because, for instance, the lifeguards were getting paid $3 or $4 more an hour to work in a neighboring town. We had to stop staffing lifeguards at Cunningham Pond, and we are not planning to staff Cunningham Pond again this year because there simply aren't enough lifeguards to do it. We also made market adjustments to supervisory staff and a few others to avoid attrition. We are, as I said before, in FY '23, we moved some part-time positions to full-time. That includes recreation admin, the fire department admin, and a highway truck driver. We have the retirees, so our full-times to part-times, that we're looking to make full-time again in fiscal year '24. Those include the police captain, custodian, planning assistant, and backfilling a police SRO officer. Our goal is employee retention. The directive from the Select Board and the Budget Committee for years now has been to do more with less. So that means what we have done is employees in every department have been cross-trained. They are now highly skilled, they are cross-trained, and they are more valuable. These employees who can do more are worth more, and they save the town more. Staff have replaced more expensive outside contract work. We have brought a lot of that work in-house. A great deal of time and resources goes into training employees. Keeping their wages competitive will keep those employees with us because when employees do leave, competitive wages will also attract new employees. And whether that they leave, you know, due to retirement or what have you, we need to be able to bring new employees in. So in summary, the overview of the overview. This budget proposal is the response to the changing economy. The cost to provide the same services at the same level has gone up. Three categories of spending have driven most of the increase, but they are not the only areas where costs have gone up. The directors have very carefully considered their budgets to minimize those increases without cutting services. Significant changes in the employment market are now requiring more resources to retain and track staff. Funding succession planning is necessary to ensure a smooth transition and continuity of services. Part-time retirees have left or are leaving, and positions are being converted back to full-time. Capital Improvement Plan Committee has recommended a robust funding schedule to avoid future bonding and leasing, which allows for smoothing of the year-to-year appropriation of funds for large capital purchases. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you. I think there are two areas that we haven't talked about quite enough during the course of seeing the department-by-department presentations, and one of them is the last two lines you have right here. I'd almost ask you to read them again, but I think maybe you could say a little bit more about the logic underlying this adjustment that we're talking about.
Absolutely. And actually, at that point, I'd like to have Lilly talk a bit more about it because she attended all the CIP committees, and I did not. Would you want me to bring that slide up?
Yes, please. So the capital improvements committees met over the course of six weeks, I believe, met with every single department to discuss their future funding needs for capital purchases. I have budgeted out to at least 2030 for all of these departments and offered an opportunity to look at smoothing out the raising appropriate amount of money for warrant articles in order to support all of these purchases for the next eight to 10 years. We have individual purchases for each of these areas, but this is the summary of all of the capital reserve funds that we plan on making requests for warrant article funding through the year 2030. This amount of money for FY '24 is approximately $1 million more than we raised and appropriated in FY '23. The reason that the recommendation for switching gears and moving towards capital reserve funds and expendable trust fund savings is because we have come to the end of the line with our bonding capacity. And in order to have the ability to continue to purchase these large capital items going forward, this was the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Plans Committee. So would you like, I would be happy to show you all of the spending projections for each of these capital reserve areas. Do you, yes?
We have time, please go.
Good. You good? Okay. So the police department in prior years was only raising $18,100 every year in a warrant article and placing it in the capital reserve fund. You can't purchase a cruiser for $18,100, ever. Maybe, maybe 20 years ago. So the rest of the funding for these cruiser purchases, that has been the police department's style, where they would buy one cruiser, and then the next year they'd buy two, and then the next year they'd buy one, and the next year they'd buy two. All of the balance of the money came out of the police department's regular general fund budget. So in each of these presentations, it was encouraged by the multiple members of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee that are also on the electricity committee. It was recommended and encouraged, if there was an opportunity, to place an electric vehicle in the future purchase plans of the town. So you see the item that says "police cruiser EV" in FY '25. The projected cost of that vehicle right now is $70,000. And then, so you can see that in each of those years, that's how much money you'd be spending out. And in order to achieve those purchases, the recommendation is to increase the capital reserve warrant article for police cruisers to $80,000 this year, $110,000 in the next two, and then back down to $85,000 for smoothing until we know the actual cost of cruisers as we go on. The capital reserve projected budgets are our best guess at this moment in time. And then next year, when we meet with the Capital Improvement Committee, we'll readjust these figures for truly what it costs to buy these items. And so it's a fluid movement. This is just an idea of what we're looking at for future warrant articles and future purchases. Okay, I'm ready for the next one. So this is the fire department, and as you can see, the fire department has all kinds of things that they purchase. Some things are equipment-related, and others are very large vehicles. And what you're not seeing on this screen is an FY chief, remind me, is it 30 or 31?
30.
There's a $1.8 million purchase, yes?
Yeah.
Of a fire engine. And that is, so that is why we are maintaining the warrant article request at that higher figure in order to have a smooth amount of money being raised and appropriated to support fire equipment and vehicles going forward. The, so this is...
Still on fire department?
No, I'm good. I think we're good there. So this is the amount of money... So, this is the amount of money that we used where we parked the ARPA money that was received in August of '21. The money had to be spent on this type of an item, so that's where we created a new capital reserve for the purpose of saving and spending on the new fire and safety complex. And this year, we are looking to, this is the slides that were used for the CIP presentation, and we're now at a stage where we've decided that a warrant article is being proposed for $750,000, all from fund balance, to go into this fund as well. So, then you would end up with obviously a larger balance there, it'd be $1.2 million as a balance that we could futurely use for that project. Winter Ops, that has been an ongoing warrant article for $5,000 for some time. This year brings us up to the $60,000. That was the goal of this plan. And in a year that we spend far more than we budgeted for, for salt, sand, and plowing efforts, this money is available to tap into, to cover our overspending in those areas that are hard to predict because it's weather. This is our DPW highway and buildings and grounds vehicles as well. The, as you can see, we raised and appropriated this year $150,000, and based off of the needs of these vehicles. These vehicles that are suggested to be purchased are very old, as you can see, 2006, 2008, 1982. We have delayed and put off, and as a man would say, duct taped these things together and kept them working for as long as we can. And we are looking at some very large purchases, and this year are asking for $375,000 to support the purchases that are listed here. And then going forward, it would be 375, 350, 300 in FY '27, and then drop down to $250,000 in '28, '29, where we are then in a situation where those vehicles would be on our fleet for 15 to 18 years with good maintenance. Okay? This is the road improvements that Seth has been working on for many years. FY '28 is the projected last year for meeting a warrant article, and FY '29 would be the last year that we would be doing these road rebuilding projects. This is the, every year, $400,000 is what was presented years ago. So, that figure is not recommended to be changed. Seth does feel that those roads that are on the list will be completed by FY '29 with this funding. This is a new capital reserve fund that we are proposing be created this year. And there are many projects, of course, this is the slide from the CIP presentation that does not include the dams that have been added to this. So, we have bridges, culverts, and dams now. We received bridge aid at about a quarter million dollars in October, and we're suggesting that we raise and appropriate $500,000 to be placed into this new capital reserve fund. But we would be using that bridge aid to offset the $500,000 amount of money that's needed. And you can see those projects going forward. Seth has some very big numbers for culverts and bridges, but that's what it costs for culverts and bridges. This is the recreation equipment, and it's a flat $65,000 amount until we get to FY '28, where it drops down to $35,000 for support of the vans, and then the equipment that they use to maintain the fields. Pool repairs, the, we have a Adams Pool Improvement Capital Reserve Fund already. We spent some money this year, as you can see, $12,551. We are projecting that in FY '27, we will need to do further maintenance in order to keep that pool in good working order. And we're suggesting that $15,000 a year to get to that $60,000 cost item four years from now is needed in order to support the maintenance of the pool. This is the GIS Capital Reserve Fund that every five to seven years, is it? That he does a flyover?
Three to five years.
And they have been raising and appropriating small amounts of money in order to achieve that. The reason that we're splitting the costs in FY '24 and FY '25 is that we're not sure how much the, all of the items will cost, and we're projecting that you might need to ask for additional pictures to be taken the following spring before the leaves come back after the winter. So, again, this is all of them rolled up into one. And as you can see, in FY '29, the dollar figure starts to come down. But more importantly, in FY '28, the bond payments also start to come down, and the, and under the current bonds that we have payments for. So, this is the new style recommended by the Capital Improvement Plan Committee to save for future needs that are of a capital nature.
Thank you. I heard you say that much of the motivation for this was to smooth out the spending. But I don't think you also mentioned that the effect of it is to reduce the spending because we don't take out the bonds, and so we don't end up paying interest on it.
Exactly.
So, that advantage going into the future. Of course, all of this was presented earlier to, to this committee and to the public, but I just wanted to...
At our first meeting by Leandra, yes.
Yes. I just wanted to reiterate for the people who might be new today that this is a new way of doing business in some respects, and that some of the increase that we see, I think you gave a number of how much this process was going to add to the budget. In the long run, that's why we save as money rather than the cost. It's just, as it gets started, I was going to take a little bit. Let me begin with questions from the people who watch the committee.
Can you give us a sense of what the interest rate that we're paying on our debt is as compared to the interest rate we're getting on pulling this cash reserve?
The, we are not making significant amounts of money in the capital reserve funds, but we are looking at bonding costs from, the last time I pulled bonding costs was three months ago, and it was over 6% for future bonds that you would be pulling in the June of, I'm sorry, July of 2024, which over a 30-year period would mean that you're paying just as much as principal as interest over the course of the loan.
But for the debt we're currently holding?
There is numerous debt, and it's all over the place.
What's the range?
I do not have an average for your interest rate question.
Is there a average, is there a prepayment penalty on any of it?
There is no ability to prepay.
The one where we have...
I've refinanced, in fact, I've refinanced all bonds that were capable of being refinanced in November of 2021.
And again, well, you did it in three waves, really.
Mm-hmm.
So, we converted debt that could have been paid off prematurely to debt that can't be paid off.
No. Unfortunately, municipal bond bank doesn't allow you to prepay your debt, but they will go out and they will refinance your debt. So, that's what we've done. The handful of bonds that we worked, that Lilly was able to prepay, that include the West Peterborough TIF, which was being paid for by the TIF district, so had no impact on the general tax rate, but that was paid off early.
Yep, the Betterment Bond.
The Betterment Bond was paid off.
The road bond for the hospital.
Yep.
And Adams Pool.
Adams Pool, that was the last one. And those were all relatively small bonds. The rest of them are all through New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank, which is very rigid about your ability. You can't, you can't, you can't prepay it, but again, they will refinance it when the opportunity arises.
And the savings?
Yep.
Were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, huge amounts of money, yeah.
From the refinancing.
Any other questions up here? Mr. Cox?
Yes, I just, this is going to add about $700,000 to the average house, $700 to the average house every year. Just this one. Two, 2.1 million.
That's not in new spending, that's in total spending. It's a $1 million increase over last year. It's not, it's not a $2 million increase.
$350 bucks.
$350 bucks.
I, thank you, Carol Nelson. I missed Seth's presentation on the roadway system upgrades. I know, it's a 10-year plan, is that right?
Yep.
So, there are certain roads in that 10-year plan, because you can't repave every single road in Peterborough, right? But I just am not clear on why in 2029, there's nothing about paving the roads or upgrading the roads, or just starting that cycle all over again.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Carol. I did address it at the meeting.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And I'm happy to reiterate it, because the point had been brought up numerous times prior, which was what is the plan going forward? And so, I did include in that presentation. No problem. I'm happy to reiterate. I think it's an important thing to reiterate. I'm glad you're asking. The, the plan currently is to reassess the roadway network and come forward to the Board, Budget Committee, and others at that time with what makes sense from my financial perspective based on what our goal is for the road network in terms of what we might need to save. So, yes, we should be saving something after the, we catch the road program, the road program catches the network up, but I, I would hesitate to put a dollar finger through that yet until we do a full reassessment of the roadway network.
Yep. So, possibly in 2027 or '28, those numbers will, there will be numbers in those blank spots.
I'm confident in the numbers right there to catch the roadway network up because we knew what our list was heading into our 10-year program. I can't give you a definitive as to what I think should go into the capital reserve going forward to preserve the roadway network.
Thank you.
I would anticipate it being less than the, the total you're seeing on the screen at this point. Because we do carry a robust amount of money in the operating budget to support our maintenance of the roads presently.
Yep.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, just so, just so we're all caught up and on the same page, the whole entire point of starting that program of $400,000 a year was to get the roads to a point where they could be supported by the regular operating budget of the Public Works Department, which, so they still have a significant amount of money built into that budget to maintain the roads, but they were in such bad shape that they came up with a 10-year plan to get them so that they can be maintained in the regular budget. So, you know, maybe someday there's another, another program to continue to improve them, but the whole entire premise of that program was to get them to a point where they could be as part of the regular budget.
So, I did have a couple of other...
Yes, Carol.
Thanks. Nicole, on one of your early slides, on the right-hand side, there was an asterisk next to a number, but it didn't say what it was for.
That's because of the, it's a special warrant article, so I'll put that back up again. This is the slide where I reviewed the total proposed budget, but then broke it out by the different fund types and how, how they get approved. Actually, just fund typed, I'm sorry, I didn't put approvals in here. And so, the one with the asterisks is the ambulance revolving fund, which is a $2.2 million expenditure budget. It receives $1,757,000 from various sources, mostly insurance, self-paid customers and municipal customers. And in effect, or, you know, Peterborough is also a municipal customer of the ambulance service because it's being run as if it was a separate business. It has its own fund. It, it receives its own revenues, it pays out its own expenses. And so, that means that as a municipal customer, Peterborough has to pay its own share of the emergency services. The only way to do that under New Hampshire law is for town meeting to raise and appropriate that fund, that money in a separate warrant article. So, last year was the first year, and we did that, if you remember, it opened, well, first year, we really did it as part of like a regular, ongoing appropriation. We did it at the open session, and we're, we're doing it again. We'll be doing it every year from here on out. Because unfortunately, as Chief Walker explained in some detail when he made his presentation, what we're receiving in revenues from insurance simply doesn't meet the full cost of providing 911 ambulance service. So, towns that, you know, towns need to be able to pay for, whether they pay their own staff, or they pay the, the staff of a private company, or they pay the staff of another community. And the various towns, including Peterborough, that we serve, all pay towards meeting those costs that aren't being met by insurance.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, can you go back to the tax, the very first slide, or the tax increase?
Sure.
No, no, it's, it's fine.
Yeah. I mean, I just, you know, I get nervous because people see these numbers, and they're like, but you said, you said it was going to be this much.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm just, there's a calculation error.
Totally a penny.
You're off by a penny.
It's a rounding error. Sorry about that.
You have a rounding error.
I do have a rounding error. This, it's a big number, so you do end up with rounding errors.
Okay. I mean, all of the other ones were perfect except for the bottom right one.
Yeah, of course.
I just, I want to say, I don't remember this ever being done before, this whole presentation. It's really helpful, really, really helpful. And I, I know it took a lot of time, and I, for one, am saying thank you for doing this. Lilly, for your summary, and Nicole, for this. It's really helpful.
We, Lilly and I definitely put a lot of time into this, but we absolutely could not have done it without everyone else that worked on this. Every director, their supervisors that work under them worked on it. All of Lilly's staff has put in countless hours into this, and then you can't even begin to count the volunteer time that went into it. It's, it's really incredible, the fact that people actually volunteer and do this is, still sends me, because it's, it's so much work that goes into putting this thing together.
Well, thank you for doing it, taking the time.
Well, I wanted to say what Carol just said, is that this is an unusual presentation from my experience in ways where the other ones were particularly effective, and so appreciate the effort put into it. Let us close out for the meeting, and we have two other pieces on the budget, on the agenda before we're looking at the minutes. I'm going to mention right now, in the interest of time, and because I don't want to spend too much of the select board's time on our internal business, I'm going to withdraw the suggestion of going over our guidelines for communications within the Budget Committee from tonight's consideration. But I would like to take a look at the proposal we have before us. It's in the packet, available for the places too. There was a charter passed by the town meeting some years ago. Oh, I have the, yeah, 1993.
Wow.
So, those were the, that was an expression of the purposes and the procedures for the Budget Committee. In my experience, which is, doesn't go back to 1993, my life experience does, but not my experience in Peterborough, we have not been following what's in there, and furthermore, we don't wish to follow what's in there. There are some things that, from the viewpoint of the present, seem very extraordinary. For example, that the Budget Committee and the Select Board would have separate recommendations on what the budget ought to be from what the town is submitting, and that they would have a written explanation of why their, their budget number is, is correct. That was one of the things that it says in the Charter for the Budget Committee. Actually, that's several of the things that's said in the Charter for the Budget Committee. So, there are a number of things in there that we don't wish to do and don't do. So, we drafted a revision. It's somewhat shorter, it's taken out, that kind of thing, it's taken out written reports, and it's retained, actually, most of the rest of it is retained from the, from the previous draft. So, as I say, I've circulated this. We have not discussed this among ourselves here. What happened is I sent out a draft to people, and people have individually sent them back to me. We did not share them among each other. We have to wait till a public meeting to do that, and this is the public meeting. If you do have a draft of it in front of you, there are just two issues which I did not see resolved among the people who sent it to me, so I've marked them in red. They don't seem to be very major issues. They don't seem to be very major issues, but we should voice it out. There we go, let's take a look at the first one there, thank you for having it available. So looking at, first of all, we have a mission statement, which is brand-new, that was not in the previous one. I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'll read the mission statement, just because that is new, and it is probably guiding the whole effort. That the Peterborough Advisory Budget Committee mission is to provide the community, the Select Board, and the Town Administration with independent review and objective analysis of the proposed annual town budget. The Budget Committee assists voters in the prudent appropriation of public funds by recommending whether to accept a proposed annual budget, so as to meet the present and future needs of the town. I'll go back to the first opening phrase there, the Peterborough Advisory Budget Committee, that is the official name, in the previous one, we're retaining that now, just to remind people that, starting with past Bill Taylor, there are no people here making decisions, we're just advising sometimes the people in the room, and sometimes the voters, purely advisory. So in Part A, we see, "The Budget Committee shall be composed of nine members, three-year terms, as before. Member resigns before his or her term, if a member resigns before his or her term expires, the Select Board shall appoint a replacement to serve until," and here's where we come on the new language, "until the next town meeting, at which time the voters will elect a replacement to fill the resignation term, or until the end of the resignation term." This was the controversy, well, the controversy, two different versions that came forward on this particular one. I'm not sure, maybe you can tell me, Nicole, if it's appropriate to have a position filled at the town meeting. For example, if a person leaves at the end of the first year, and has two years left of the term, the Select Board then appoint somebody, and I'm going to get an answer from a town board.
Normally, when someone dies from an elected position, and someone is appointed, they are appointed until the next town election, and then they serve out the remainder of that term. So if somebody has a three-year term, and they resign after year one, the person that's appointed, would be appointed until the next town election, town meeting, and then that person would have two years on that position.
So I think we would replace the phrase "town meeting" here, in the red portion, with "the next town election."
Until the end of the resignation term.
Right. But it is.
The new person with it.
So Lynn, in the scenario of like with the Select Board, there could be a potential for two Select Board members to be elected on the same, if the one person resigned after one.
You could potentially have three, it's actually happened.
Oh, okay.
But they would all have different.
They'd be staggered.
Yeah.
Same with Budget Committee, okay.
Yeah, the important thing is to keep it staggered, so you have, in case the Budget Committee, three people elected at a time, or at least three terms starting at each time. Carol?
I believe that happened last year, when Bob resigned, we ended up voting for four members in the Budget Committee. Three were for three years, one was for either one or two years, to finish out Bob's.
Yes, Mary's the expert on that.
That's Mary's position.
All right.
So, to be clear, we're deciding the latter?
We're deciding that this will read in the next draft, starting at the red.
It's like Bill County, I said.
"The Select Board shall appoint a replacement to serve until the next town election, at which time the voters will elect a replacement to fill the resignation term."
Correct. Carl, Bill's got a question?
I'm sorry?
Actually, it's a comment to.
Oh, oh, sorry Bill, I can't see you.
In that Part A, it should be the Peterborough Advisory Budget Committee shall be composed, you might as well be consistent.
Yeah, that's true. Any lawyer would have picked that up. But I think what we ought to do, facilitate this, is after the initial use of the term, we should put in parentheses a shorter version of it, so that we don't have to be too.
Here we have to refer to us.
But we will make it clear that the word advisory is part of the official name, certainly. It was not good drafting.
Because, Linda, is that, is there reference to until the end of the term, is that somewhere in statute?
Yes.
So would your, would your charter reference the statute, as opposed to creating something that may be null a year from now when state law changes? In other words, you know, electing consistent with state charter, with state statute?
I will consult Linda on getting a good reference.
I'm just saying, you know, I can just see, with our luck, we'll be back here in a year.
Well, it took, since '93, do you even look at it?
Yeah.
Some people live back here. Won't be needed.
Could I just, just a little quick thing? The first paragraph about the mission statement, when I first got on the department, we met separately, they'd start with the town administrator, the Select Board would make a recommendation, "Why don't we do this?", then come to the Budget Committee, and we'd say, "Well, we'd like to see you do this." And it was like a tennis game, back and forth, back and forth, until we high-ended out. Then a number of years later, we decided to do it in this format, where everybody was here together, got one idea that everybody would agree on, and then give it to the department directors. But originally, from '93, it was, "You said, then we said, then you say, then we say", you know, it ended up becoming quite a rigmarole, from a historic point of view.
Well, that's consistent, then, with the original language.
Yeah.
But the pattern changed, by the time newcomers like me came, when nobody was doing it.
Yeah, we're just trying to streamline it a little bit, and everybody get their say. Am I right, Nicole?
That sounds about right.
So I think B and C are self-evident and controversial. The only issue seems to be, on the next one, is when the Budget Committee should receive information necessary to its consideration. I think it originally said, "One week", and somebody said, "That's too short", then it should be "two weeks". If it's at least a week, that gives us a chance to get it on the agenda, but if it's two weeks, it gives us a chance to do a little bit more, so. Does anybody have a feeling which way it ought to be? Anybody on Budget Committee feel it ought to be one week or two weeks, I think?
I'd like to make a motion for two weeks.
A second, then.
I have a question.
Yes?
The paragraph seems to refer to 30 days prior to any town meeting, that's an annual event.
Yes.
So, one week, two weeks, I mean, what's happening one week or two weeks before the town meeting, that you would need to deal with?
Time to prepare.
For the town meeting? Isn't this the preparation for the town meeting?
This is some of the preparation. The point here is, if there's any matter that requires its attention.
I see, any new information that needs to be addressed, okay.
Can I, I think we need to clarify.
This is language from the previous one.
Yeah. I think this is a good opportunity to clarify which session town meeting, because obviously, this was written before Peterborough adopted its charter, and we went to having a deliberative session town meeting, where it's possible to amend anything that's on the ballot, and then an open session of town meeting, where it's possible.
Isn't the deliberative session part of?
Part of town meeting.
Yeah, so that would be included.
All right, so I would definitely want to say.
Deliberative session.
Any town meeting, or any session of town meeting?
That's my reading, too.
Okay.
Like, any meeting.
It's one town meeting, but it has three components.
But town meeting has a particular.
Well, we can drop the lower, the capitalization.
We could say, "The deliberative town meeting", is that the official name of it? Deliberative session of the town meeting?
Yeah, deliberative session of town meeting.
And be clear that it has to be done prior to that session.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things is, I'd love two weeks to review these presentations before they're delivered. So, rolling this out to any town budget meeting, any Select Board meeting, would be incredibly helpful, to make sure that we have time to actually process the information before we're elected to discuss it. I don't see that as being a huge lift, so why don't we just drop the capitalization, and just say, "Any town meeting"?
So, just to clarify, then, you're asking for it to be changed to Budget Committee meeting?
Yeah, this is not a town meeting.
Well, it's a meeting for the town, so it might not be a capital, even capital N meeting.
I don't think people understand that terminology. This does not apply to Budget Committee meetings, where, in general, the information would be presented at the Budget Committee meeting, not prior to it. The numbers would be delivered, at least a draft of numbers, but the presentations are prepared up to the last minute, some sort of.
So why not put a two-week frame on that?
That is a heavy lift.
Well, let me answer this question, he's asking, me apparently, in my interpretation, why we don't suggest that this apply to Budget Committee meetings, that we have two weeks in advance of Budget Meetings to look things over. My answer is that, the way we've been doing it has worked well, because we have the option, if something comes up that we don't understand, to bring them back again. So we have, what I'm trying to do is facilitate the smooth operation of the town, they spend a great deal of time getting their budget together, but making a presentation for, by a department, is a separate effort. And the idea of giving it to us at the meeting has worked well, although we don't always know everything that's going to happen. We can then, being armed by that, and the discussion, and the input from the town, have further questions. And in the past, the people in the town have been very good at bringing people back to the meeting, to address any further issues that we have. So I think we can talk separately about whether to do that, but let's deal with the proposal here, which is to, for the moment, and to see if we think it's one or two weeks is sufficient for the case of the deliberative session of the town meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
If something is brand-new, and would be helpful for you to consider at deliberative, but is not available for knowledge, or even known yet, two weeks prior, such as last year, my recommendation, the day before deliberative session last year, was to increase the gas and diesel and heating fuel budgets, because the war in Ukraine had just started, and it was dramatically affecting those commodities. And the decision was to not make an adjustment, which is really hurting us this year, because we did not increase those budgets, and we are having to look at other areas of our budget to cut spending, because we can't overspend the bottom line.
I think this still allows, though, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think this still allows, even, you still make that recommendation to the Select Board, but you're not necessarily going to guarantee an opinion from the Budget Committee if it is made within that two weeks.
Right.
And it's not to say the Budget Committee wouldn't be able to make a recommendation if they chose to have a meeting and make that consideration, but maybe language, like, "All effort shall be made to..."
I was going to suggest, where possible, stick my phrase in there, Ukraine war.
I mean, it's an extreme circumstance, but it just happened this year, so.
Mary?
I think the current language addresses that. The operative word is, "The Budget Committee should be informed", it does not say, "Shall be informed."
That's true, that's oversold, but yeah, you're right.
So that does take into account the scenario, that, or other scenarios, that may arise unexpectedly at the last minute.
Carol?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that we're clear, that the capital T, capital M town meeting, is the SB2 town meeting that we're referring to, correct?
Yes, a deliberative session, SB2-type.
Thank you. But in the past, we have had special town meetings, that have been called, to spend more money, like we did for the bridge. So that is not taken, is that taken into account in this?
To any town meeting.
Town meeting, any town meeting, yeah.
Okay, and then C, where you say, "A quorum of five members is required to conduct a meeting." Do you guys ever vote on things at your meetings?
Once, well, yes, we do, we vote on motions that are made in the meeting.
Officers.
We elect officers.
We elect officers, we approve meetings, we do various things. We can only do those things if we have quorum.
Correct, but you can, I guess what I'm getting at is, you can still hold a meeting, you just can't vote on things.
No, we cannot hold one meeting either.
Can't take information, you can't take information if you don't have quorum. You have to have a quorum of a body, even to consider something within their power.
Because of the type of bodies it is, versus like the Affordable Housing Committee?
Any public, any public body. You have to have a quorum to have a meeting, to consider any business that would be before that body.
Okay.
So, again, it would be that those, you know, particular circumstances, based on the way that we run these meetings, where it's a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Budget Committee, if the Budget Committee, for whatever reason, couldn't make a quorum, but the Select Board could, the Selectmen could still go forward with having the meeting. The Budget Committee could, you know, members could be there in attendance, but they couldn't be making any recommendations, or couldn't vote on anything.
All right, so we have some rewording of this, and I'm going to interpret the relaxed terms we put in, to allow us to put this at the two-week level, rather than the one-week level. And now, let me return to the point that Andrew raised. Andrew, would you like to suggest that we add some language about submissions to the Budget Committee meetings?
Yeah, I propose amending this paragraph to include reference that Budget Committee should be allowed to review all materials to be presented at Budget Committee meetings two weeks in advance. We're meeting one week, week after week.
No, that's not, I couldn't do my job that way.
We have six meetings that are scheduled a year in advance.
Hey, but we're doing the budget, we, for instance, the budget you received today includes the removal of a debt service payment from the Water Enterprise Fund, that we won't have to make until FY '25.
That's the $100,000 spread that I saw?
Yes.
$400,000 spread.
There's a revenue increase to, there, sorry, there's an expenditure increase to it, it's like $100,000.
There's both going on in there, but that was the big reason why the revenue budget needed to be updated. That we just found out last week.
That was a meeting that we had on February 2nd, with the DES over Cold Stone Springs project, and they have pushed out the first payment of the loan, to the fall of '24, which would be FY '25. So I removed that bond payment out of the water fund on February 3rd. Everything is very fluid.
But I guess that's my, the point, is that the amount of money that the town is proposed to spend, has gone up $100,000 in six weeks, from my analysis of this.
Then you are not looking at the current budget.
No, the 50, the one that got emailed out, right?
I'm not, I guess we have.
The budget's going up, and like, there's no explanation as to why.
Well, where, are you looking at the general fund number?
Let's address the question up on the table, which is, whether we're going to have the kind of rule that he's applying, that he would like to see.
Do we have a second on the floor, I guess?
Can I just make one more comment? I think, Carl, if we're to be addressing Andrew's objection, or other pieces, that you want on the table for now, and that's the communications, I think that would be addressed, or that's a good time to discuss, how our weekly communications should happen.
But our internal guidelines wouldn't impact anybody else presenting these meetings. So that wouldn't, those guidelines wouldn't impact town officers.
Correct.
To Manny's point, are you making a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Sir, we already, we had a motion and a second, ongoing with two weeks, that was the first.
No, no, that one, that one we've done, yes.
You voted in.
I wasn't voting.
I made an executive decision. Which I explained, I don't feel, does anybody want to vote on that?
For the record, we should.
All right, we're going to take a vote, on whether we should say two weeks, or one week.
I hope that we do two weeks.
We have a motion that we have two weeks?
No.
Do we have a second?
There was a second.
Do we have any discussion?
Nope.
Do you have all in favor of two weeks?
Two weeks.
All right, thank you, that's unanimous from what I can see. Let's talk now about the motion that I think you're introducing. Is there any further discussion? Do we have a second on his motion? You want to restate the motion?
Sure. Move to include terminology that Budget Committee members should be permitted to review all presentations and collateral to be displayed at Budget Committee meetings in advance of the meeting. Two weeks sounds great, open to flex on that.
Do we have a second? Second to this motion? I don't hear a second, so I think the motion fails. Let's look at Section E. This, again, is language from the previous draft, "The duty of the Budget Committee to explain at each town meeting the tax impact of money is authorized by ballot or composed for consideration at town meeting." Seems to me it references mainly warrant articles, the second phrase.
But in recent years, it hasn't been the Budget Committee that has presented warrant articles, it's been the Select Board, and we generally hand it over to town staff, administration to discuss, so.
No, that's absolutely right, this does not say to present them, to explain the tax impact, it's only the tax impact. So she had one chart up there with tax impact, that would be the one thing that I think That would be the one thing that I think would be applicable in here. If I might say, why I didn't take this out is because I thought that it was useful for that one thing, for some one thing, to come from somebody other than the people on the head table. Because we talked earlier with some controversy about what's worthwhile about the Budget Committee, and I think we said one thing that some people seem to agree upon was that they did have the appearance of being somewhat independent of the town administration. And so to give them, to give us, a role in which we explain one thing and one thing which our explanation would be perfectly consistent with whatever the town is saying, I think.
Okay, so going forward, since this hasn't been the practice, going forward, that would be...
Yes, yes. Well, this certainly has been the practice. So that's what's on the table, is that suggestion. Yes, Mary?
As your point was made earlier, that particular statement in E reinforces the intent for the mission statement.
The independent review.
And the prudent appropriation.
Do we see our comments on number E? Let's turn the page to the rest of the E. Well, maybe I wasn't thinking... "The duty of the Budget Committee is to explain at town meeting," or we talked about that, "review and evaluate Warren articles based on short and long-term financial implications and make recommendations to town administration." That's the same thing that we do here with the Department reports. The next item was, would be the duty of the Budget Committee to withhold recommendations to voters only if there is insufficient information for making recommendation. You might recall that's what happened last year. We did not vote at the time scheduled on whether to support the Fire Department project because we didn't feel we had sufficient information. So we said that normally we would be required to vote one way or the other, abstaining only in the case... Well, let's say it would be no vote in the case where you don't feel you have sufficient information. Carol?
On E1, where it says, "Explain at town meeting, at each town meeting, the tax impact of monies authorized by ballot or proposed for consideration." What does "proposed for consideration" mean? How would that happen? What does that entail?
Some monies are addressed in the town meeting, Warren articles.
Or amendments.
It's not all on the ballot, is what he's saying.
So it's just kind of...
Because there's a lot of money that gets...
So it's like two different places?
Yes.
Do you want to specify that? No, it just...
I think it is specified. It says that it's on the ballot or proposed at the town meeting. Those are the two places. It's only talking about the tax impact. It's not saying whether this is a good thing or bad.
Right, I know, I understand.
It's saying what the effect is. So she did that today. She talked today about what the impact would be of everything that's in the raise and appropriate category.
Epithetical.
It's approved, yeah.
Well, I guess I'm just saying the ballot is very specific. You know it's a ballot. You go to the community center and you vote by ballot. Vote by ballot. But then "proposed for consideration," is that...
That's all the things we present at deliberative session we hopefully voted on at the open...
Right.
Open session?
So things are presented at deliberative session, voted on the ballot. Everything else, bonds, are mandated to go to the open session based on the way the charters were ran. So that's where the proposed for consideration would be. You would propose those for consideration at the open session for a final vote, or propose for amendment if they're to go onto the ballot. Those proposals would be at the deliberative session.
So it's like all over the place?
It's all over the place. And I think that's... I think it is smart to leave it as kind of generically at town meeting.
At this point, yeah. So if we ever go away from being SB2, we have to reevaluate it.
SB2, like...
Sorry.
Good luck with that one. Anyhow, back to the meeting.
Now, the fourth element in E is, again, current practice, and that is that the recommendation of the Budget Committee would be recorded on the ballots and on the Warren article proposals presented elsewhere, not by individual, but just the totals. And I have seen in the past where somebody from the town has said... Who was it who voted against this particular thing? And now we don't... We're not hiding. Whoever it is speaks up and says here, "I was the one, and here's why." Or else somebody points up and says, "That's the person." That person will say whatever wishes. All right, so looking down at F, "The Select Board, Budget Committee, and Department Heads shall be required to work cooperatively, as far as practicable, to ensure the process is undertaken in a manner to best conserve the community's needs." I hope we don't have much controversy there.
That almost addresses Don's point, I think, you know, that we're working collaboratively and cooperatively, not separately.
Yes, it makes it a lot easier than perhaps the former way of doing things. "Select Board and Budget Committee shall meet jointly to evaluate the recommendations." This is what we've been doing over these last six weeks or so. And then subsequently, we need a joint session to make their... to record their recommendations, that is, to vote among themselves. I believe that is scheduled for March 7th this year. So we're scheduled to make a vote, both the Select Board and the Budget Committee, on whether we support whatever is going forward at that point. And then the last one is, has not been modified from the original, I think. "Being a public body, the Budget Committee is subject to the right-to-know law, RSA 91. It's required to conduct all its meetings in a manner which is open to the public, post notice of its meetings, keep minutes of its meetings, and have those minutes available for public inspection in the Select Board's office within six days of its meetings, or take any other action relating thereto." I'm sorry, I don't understand what that last phrase refers to. But it was written by lawyers, so I'm not suggesting changing. If somebody would like to change it, please let us know right now. Seeing no more comments, no more hands, I suggest that the Budget Committee take a vote on whether we would like to pass this recommended change on to the Select Board for its consideration and send it forward to a town meeting. Town meeting is the only one authorized to approve this charter.
So move.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is ready to further discussion on what we should do with this draft charter? Yes, Mandy?
Just a question, just because I don't know the answer to it. Is this something that we would run by town council just to make sure that they're, you know, cross all their t's off? Make sure that before we put it before the voters that we didn't miss something? Okay, because I'm not a lawyer, so...
That's a selective few.
That's one.
And who made the initial motion?
I missed it.
Don.
Don, thank you.
Just one question, Carl. Do we mention election of officers in this?
Yes.
Yes, B. The elected member shall... On an annual basis, elected chairperson, vice chairperson, and a secretary from among themselves. You might find that secretary comment curious, but we do have a secretary who took notes in the meetings where we did not have the support of the town staff, which was early on in the process because we didn't have the Select Board at the same time either. We're just doing things such as electing our officers.
We had a motion and a second.
Yeah, any further discussion? Speaking just to the Budget Committee, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
And opposed?
Everybody. Almost a real Gloria was in favor.
One opposed. We had you, Gloria.
You can change that.
Carla, would you like to get approval of the minutes? Talking about last week.
Well, I think it's appropriate for me to make a motion to, for the Select Board, to accept your proposed changes to your charter and then ask for a second if you're...
A second.
All those in favor of accepting the Budget Committee's proposal to changes?
Aye.
Thank you. Great work on that. Of course, the workout. And at this time, I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting for the Select Board's portion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I have one last little thing I can drop in at the very end here. I don't have a draft of the Warren article for the revision to the Budget Committee's charter yet because I'm not exactly sure how that needs to look on the town meeting warrant. But in all other respects, I do have a draft of the town meeting warrant that we've reviewed with town council and with representatives from DRA as appropriate. So that's what this is, what we're showing here. These are the same... This is the gross appropriation for the budget, which is the general fund budget plus the water and wastewater. So as I've explained before, you have to... State law requires that you only put the gross expenditure amount on the warrant. You can't take away any expected revenues or anything else. You just have to put that. The only time you can put any kind of offset up there is if you're planning to raise and appropriate money from the unrestricted fund balance, in which case you'll see that. Or, in the case of a special revenue fund, we have $131 that is going to be offset entirely from the pay-as-you-throw fund. Because special revenue funds have different rules from general fund. And just like everything, everything has a special rule when it comes to municipal budgets, just so you know. Capital reserves, expendable trust funds, these are many of the ones that Lilly reviewed. The total amount to raise and appropriate there is the $929,700. Roadway systems upgrade capital reserve fund is $400,000. Municipal facilities campus expendable trust fund, this is the fire station where we're storing the fire station money, $750,000. Two come from the unrestricted fund balance, so no amount will be raised through taxation.
We didn't vote on that.
You haven't yet. You're right. This is a draft that I put together with Lilly. This is our draft recommendation. So this is not the final by any stretch. But this is what I'm preparing to send out to everyone. Facilities and grounds capital reserve fund. This, again, this is just establishing a fund. This isn't actually... There isn't actually any money to fund it. Upper Hall expendable trust fund, $5,000, with $5,000 from the unrestricted fund balance. Bridges, culverts, and dams expendable trust fund, $500,000, with the proceeds from the unanticipated bridge aid that was accepted by the Select Board on December 20th to be used for the purpose... The balance of the funds would then have to be raised through taxation. Ambulance service revolving fund, $450,834. This is that town clerk Warren article I was talking about. So this is $8,297, which is the increase. Plus the... Okay, well, I explain the article first.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the rest of it is to explain the compensation for a newly-elected town clerk because this was never, near as I can tell, and I've researched the Warren articles going back to 1986. And near as I can tell, the town has never established the existing compensation for a town clerk. So that includes the... That they would be essentially considered or treated like a regular full-time employee pursuant to the Town of Peterborough's Employee Manual, which will include a salary level equal to executive structure grade six, minimum compensation. After the completion of each year of service, the town clerk shall then receive an increase equal to the combined poll and merit increase, which is approved at the prior town meeting. And furthermore, to raise and appropriate the sum of... And this is where we get to the current. The sum of $8,297.
Could I point out one thing? That is not the... That is not all salary money. That includes the cost of social security and health care retirement on the...
Exactly. And that's what's included with all the benefits. So when you talk about the benefits that are equivalent to those offered to the Peterborough's employee manual, a regular full-time employee, that includes all those benefits. So like I said, I can't see where the town ever adopted this before. This was something that was raised by the Department of Revenue Administration as needing to happen. So that's why this Warren article includes all of this language.
Where it's referring to a regular full-time employee, I would really like it to say a department director because that is what the town clerk is... The town clerk is a department director. They manage their department. They manage their employees. They budget, just like any other department director.
I... There are many. We have supervisors that manage their departments and employees who aren't treated as department directors or are called out as department directors. So you could certainly go either way with that. I think that's, again, something we can leave to the Select Board to determine.
We also have the consideration of the Secretary of State, where they don't consider the town clerk employee of the town.
Correct.
They're a separate elected position.
Town clerk, which is mentioned.
Right. So to treat it as an employee, how does that jog with them?
Mandy, do you report to the Secretary of State?
Well, Lilly has the thinking answer to that question. I don't have anything to add.
I've already run this Warren article by the Department of Revenue.
None of us have seen it.
Right, no, this is the first time you're seeing it.
And it's already been run.
And that's been run through the Secretary of State from DRA?
No.
Because you were very clear about the...
Maybe it's a week.
...employee as far as overseeing conduct and that sort of thing, so...
It begins her only run the language past the Secretary of State's office as well.
And now that says the grade six level minimum compensation for a newly-elected clerk. We have a clerk that is not newly-elected. It shouldn't probably get minimum compensation, right? There's a pay salary range in the level six, which is to be determined later when those, all those salary ranges are adjusted.
If... I don't know that it would be revised. Carol?
So Mandy was the one we had.
So I had a question. I had a comment from before that... Now I get... Before we get too far down, I just wanted to comment on the idea of a regular full-time employee and not to get into the weeds, just to make a comment, and we can move on, that are there any other town employees who present budgets to us on behalf of their department? Like, I feel like that would be a department head kind of category. But that's just where my brain went, so...
We've certainly... We've had supervisors who participated in the presentation.
No, I meant created their budget and presented.
Create and present? All the directors create their budgets.
Right, that's what I do.
Yeah, and all the superintendents. And superintendents also participate in creating their divisions, subdivisions' budgets. So it's... There's a lot of people, there's a lot of people involved in that.
That was...
Carol?
Can you just... I'm confused. You said town clerk is not an employee?
No, they're an elected official.
Elected official.
Well, you gave... Okay, so...
I'm not an employee either.
Right.
Despite my massive...
But does Linda get a salary as the town clerk?
I do.
But she's not an employee.
She's elected by the people of Peterborough.
And who pays her?
The taxpayers.
The people of Peterborough pay her.
So she has an existing salary in the town clerk's budget. The $8,297 would be the raise that she would receive. And then that goes along... So to explain a little bit more, DRA also noted And then that, that goes along, so to explain a little bit more, DRA also noted that we haven't readopted compensation for any of our elected officials in a really, really long time. I don't think it's changed at all since the early 90s. So we're also looking at the next Warren article, which would be to readopt or raise the compensation of each of these other elected officials.
And that was not proposed by any of the Select Board?
That is correct.
Yeah, this is the first time we're seeing this.
That is correct.
It's the first time we're seeing this.
This is the first time you're seeing it, because I just got the language back. And I wanted to make sure that the Select Board and the Budget Committee could have some time to consider it and then come back at a later meeting and talk about it more thoroughly.
Yes, Carol? Can we get back to the town clerk for a second?
Yes.
The town clerk's position, just to reiterate, is not an employee of the town, and therefore not subject to the disciplinary or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Performance evaluation.
Oversight of the town administration, therefore, and it's not technically an employee, so.
I don't think it's saying that, that the town clerk is an employee, they get, they get the same benefits as a regular full-time employee.
Okay.
It's not calling me an employee.
So that position is clearly compensated, because they do the same work as?
Mr. Cars? Yeah, what's a level six?
So, great, that's one of our salary grades.
Yes, I'm asking, what is the equivalent to?
It's, it's, so the town clerk is in that grade. There's a number of other employees, supervisors, I think we might have, I think they're all supervisor-level employees that are in that position. But I'd have to pull the salary structure to review it. Rec directors, town planners, town clerk, police lieutenant, code officer, building inspector, assistant library director, highway superintendent, fraud mix.
I, why wouldn't she be the equivalent of a library director? I mean, that's crazy that she's not.
It says minimum compensation at level six, so I think we have the flexibility to, somebody could raise her. I'm not sure who has a town clerk's.
I didn't, to be, to be perfectly frank, I didn't develop the salary structure. This is what the town adopted in 2002, and so we've been working with it ever since.
Who does a merit performance review order for salary increase?
Looks like no one, because she gets it regardless, according to this way.
Not currently, there is no reason.
I haven't, I haven't raised in over three years.
So this is basically giving you a raise, is what this is asking?
That's ridiculous, if that's all she's getting for a raise of $9,000 in three years.
That's not the raise. That includes social security and the Hampshire retirement costs as well. So 20% of that figure is for the Hampshire retirement pension and social security budget.
So she's getting even less.
And it also includes the cemetery trustee secretarial stipend that was separate and now is part of my budget.
Nicole, you want to go through the rest of it?
Yeah, there's not much left after this. So everything else is, is not a, is not a money item. So we have establishing a town forest, readopting, this is, some changes into the state law require us to readopt the optional veterans' tax credit and the all-veterans' tax credit. If we don't, then they will automatically reset to $50 a year, which is the state minimum. We certainly don't want to do that to the veterans that are receiving these credits. And then we will be looking to make a revision to the South Peterborough Tiff District by adding in some parcels. I didn't have the parcel ID numbers, so I just threw the language in there. And then at the moment, the only thing we have on the, that has to go to the open session, according to the charter, is a Warren article for if the, the budget should fail on the ballot, then we would consider it an open session. So this is required by the charter and would be passed over if it passes on the ballot.
Where's the town forest?
The town forest will be, if adopted, will be off of Greenfield Road. It's known as the sawmill properties.
Oh, okay.
And so this is the, so as you, I'm sure, remember, we took some land from the Harris Center so that we would have the full piece at the corner of Elm Street and Dublin Road to work with for the fire station building project. In exchange for that, the Harris Center asked us to make sure that we conserved land of equal or greater value. We had tax-dated property that is really has very limited potential, that's on the town's books. The Conservation Commission has for years wanted to conserve this as well, and so it was agreed that we would take these tax-dated parcels and include them in a special Warren article for the town to consider creating a town forest on.
What's the assessed value of these parcels?
I don't know, because they haven't been updated since 1993, since they're town-owned property. We don't, we don't regularly update the assessed values of town-owned property, because we're not assessing them.
We know roughly how many acres we're talking about, yeah?
Oh, I, you know what? I used to have that.
Oh, I don't remember.
Yeah. Thirty?
Thirty-four, it's three, it's the three parcels. One parcel's like literally a few hundred square feet. I think it's thirty-some-odd acres. Does include a large area that's wet. In fact, the only access to it is through wet areas, which is one of the reasons it makes it so difficult for any development use.
It's also very steep.
Yeah.
It's incredibly steep. There's, there's what used to be a landing area where the sawmill was, and then they had, the sawmill had what would now be considered an illegal access through the wetlands to get to it. For us to even get to where that location is, we would need extensive wetlands permitting, and it's, it's really not enough of a site to want to build a house on, so. It's a good piece. It also abuts other conserved land, so it creates an extension, or preserves an extension to the wildland quarter that already exists there.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'm sorry. Quick question?
Go ahead.
On the raises for the selectmen, you're balancing everything out instead of giving the chair a little more? You close the logic there?
Yes, the chair tends to do a little bit more work.
Right, but coming forward, you're going to be?
Everything's going to, everything's going to be balanced out, yes.
Sounds like a demotion to me, too.
So it's a little bit of a demotion. Well, you know.
You should have had, you should have had the ones that wrote up windows.
One of the things we actually, one of the things that we actually, not, I mean, kind of half-jokingly, but not really jokingly considered was, you know, maybe the Select Board member who's the planning board liaison should get the additional stipends, and for the ones really putting in the hours. But, you know, there's, the supervisor, the checklist, the treasurer, the Select Board, they have been received an increase for stipends. What we did write in there, too, was recognition of the incredible amount of additional work the supervisor, the checklist do in election years. So we wanted to, you know, propose increases to those as well. So these are outside of the budget process, which is why we hadn't really talked about them. We wanted to make sure that we got the language of these two articles correct before we even proposed them, because it is tricky, and DRA is persnickety about these things. So that's why they're coming to you a bit late. I'm certainly not expecting that you make any votes whether or not to recommend them or not recommend them, or amend them or not amend them tonight. I'm going to send this out to everyone tomorrow morning, so you'll have more time to consider it and ask questions. Be upset with me for not having said it to you earlier, what have you. I certainly understand. It does feel like that they're being, they're being pounced upon you. But it really wasn't the case. It was just a matter of making sure that we had it right before we brought them forward.
Mandy?
I just wanted to comment on what you just said, Nicole, and I just want to thank you for bringing them to us, even though it may be draft, and it may be, I know it seems like some people are like, oh my gosh, this is the first time I'm seeing it, but it's part of a process, and I think that personally, it's helping me have more trust in the process when we can be included as early as possible, rather than waiting until tomorrow and having it sent out. I think there's more people here tonight to see it, to be aware, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Nicole, just very briefly, could you outline which of these Warren articles will appear on the ballot and which will?
Everything is going to be on the ballot as of the moment, unless the selectmen decide that they want to move items off the ballot. The only thing that must be on the ballot is the budget for town meeting, and of course, zoning amendments and election of town officials. Those are the three things that are absolutely required to be on the ballot. Every other item can be moved to the open session or not.
Because we don't have a large appropriation.
No bond. No bond. So the only thing that absolutely has to be on the open session, again, is that reiteration of the proposed budget, and that you'll see as Article 18 right now. I'm sure it's going to get remembered.
Thank you for this bonus coverage. I have a motion to, from the Budget Committee to accept the minutes from the last time. By Mandy, is there any discussion, seconded by Mandy, any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
And opposed, including Al, on the positive side. Thank you. I have a motion to, agree.
So move.
Second?
I have a second.
In favor? Thank you.
I'll say vote on March 7. I have to post. Don't want to go back that way. Is March 7 the 50th day? We need two weeks of paperwork.
24.36 acres. 24.36 acres all together. 16.